Okay, so we want.
Who's making the smoothie?
I would like to adjourn the special meeting by unanimous consent.
So moved.
And Nancy, whenever you're ready.
You're on mute, Nancy.
I said the whole thing. All right. I'd like to call to order the committee the whole meeting for Monday, March 8th, 2021. First up, we have an item from the Director of Public Service and Engineering.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I have one item for you this evening, and it's the permission to bid our 2021 to 2022 Road Salt. As in years past, Swap 4G invites members of the organization to partner with them for the cooperative purchase of Road Salt for each winter. As a member, Gehanna is eligible to participate in this program. So we are respectfully requesting legislation authorizing Gehanna to participate in Swap 4G's Road Salt Cooperative bid for next winter.
Any questions or comments?
Other than just how have we done this year? Above, under?
Compared to last year, certainly much higher. I would say we're around normal, probably a little bit higher than normal this year. It was a pretty challenging winter for our crews.
Still have a few weeks to go.
Consent sounds fine, Nancy.
This is okay for consent?
Yeah.
All right, great. Next item from the Department of Technology.
Thank you, Council.
You're on mute, Kevin.
You're on mute, Kevin.
Because I run these meetings, I have like three mute buttons that I got to make sure I hit in the live stream. So I hit them and then they delay. So anyway, enough excuses. Thank you, guys. Tonight, I'm here to present the upgrade to the audio/video system in council chambers. As we've talked about, this project is to prepare us for coming back into chambers for public meetings. This project basically does three things. It prepares us to produce a quality livestream. It also prepares you guys to present from any position amongst the dais. And then it prepares, or it continues, the citizen engagement that we've become so accustomed to as far as, you know, the virtual meeting aspect of these meetings. This project includes the installation of multiple PTC cameras, point and zoom cameras, basically. It integrates with the audio system, which will automatically switch focus depending on who is speaking along the dais. In addition, what we've added through conversation last week or the week before, we have also added the upgrade to the projection system in council chambers as well. This gets us HD-quality video inside of the room, but then it also gives you guys the ability to present from your iPads up to the projection system inside of the chambers while also producing that feed out to the internet to, again, continue this feed here. The total project cost is $89,808 and a little bit of change here. By doing both projects together, we realize a 20% reduction in the overall project cost, which equates to about $22,000 in savings by doing the projectors at the same time in which we do the camera project. You know, based on the need to get this equipment in place, to have you guys be able to come back into chambers, continue these services here, you know, we are requesting that we pass this next week with emergency waiver on this ordinance. The other note that I would like to make is that I believe you all saw an email from over the weekend where there were some concerns about closed captioning functionality and the desire to enhance that. Just today, we've been working with the vendor to come up with an additional piece of hardware that would give us the ability to do that in real time. The addition there, we believe the addition there will be no more than $5,000. So I presented the 88, I'm sorry, yeah, the $89,000. That does not include the additional $5,000 for the closed captioning piece. And we've been working, and just this evening through, just I want to make a note that even through this evening's meeting here and the live stream here through YouTube, we've enhanced the closed captioning piece through Teams and made that larger for some folks with hearing impairment that might be participating. So with that, I can take any questions.
The first thing I guess is, my recollection is that the estimate from a technology standpoint, or not even an estimate, but the CARES fund limit was about $80,000, is that correct?
The CARES fund limit originally was $80,000, but we were able to move some money around, add up, I believe it was the salaries and benefits line, CARES, still CARES appropriations to make the project whole.
And including the five?
Not, that does not include the five. I've not had a conversation with Joanne about the five.
I was gonna say, Joanne, Director Burry is on the line, if she can speak to that?
So we were able to find some contract services dollars that we were able to move over to the tech services. And then we had the ability in our salaries and benefits line to move a little bit more. But we do have the ability, if this is a true need, you know, as we're looking at the salaries and benefits, we're realizing that we probably will not have as much as anticipated when we set those at the beginning of the year. So if there is an additional need, we could definitely look to those salaries and benefits lines, and then we could bring for the action for council to approve a transfer if it's so desired.
I guess where I'm going is wherever this ends up, I would expect you to fall within that limit, whatever the limit is. Of CARES funds.
Yeah, and I'd be more than happy to fall inside of the limit. If it's a desire to add the closed captioning piece, then I'll have to work with Joanne to make sure that, like she just indicated, that that money is available through the CARES fund.
Any other comments or questions?
Just, I think, real quick, I think that the closed captioning, I'll throw my support in there. I think that we have to do it. I think that it's an important piece to make sure that our meetings are accessible to all of our residents, not just the residents that we've heard from, but there's a lot of people who don't speak up and are embarrassed about hearing loss, just like natural hearing loss. So I think that absolutely needs to be a consideration moving forward.
Okay, all right.
So we'd say, it does make sense. Just what's, so from a next step standpoint, timing standpoint, I guess it's really information from Joanne or detail from Joanne on resolving the funding within whatever CARES funding is available.
Yeah, I could look at that tomorrow and shoot an email out to the group and then for the next committee, have the transfer ready to go. I'll have that answer for you by tomorrow.
Just, just my, real quick, picking back on what Brian said, so I'm looking at the line items here and just the various costs. First off, let me say that I do support the closed captioning. As somebody that does suffer from hearing loss, I suppose I hide it fairly well, but I don't know that's communicated to 20 years should ask. I personally think it's worth it. But as far as these line items here, I see like, under the auto-switching camera system, apparently there's two cameras for like 50, let's talk six grand. If that was reduced to just one, is this system still largely functional? And does it get us underneath the cap of the CARES funds? And I'm not saying that it has to be one less camera, but I'm just looking at the line items and thinking of things that potentially be still back to allow us to fit underneath that budget. I don't know that we would get rid of one server when there's only one. I'm just saying, as a non-techy kind of person, I'd do that if it critical component. But if there's three or something, it's two substantially the same, but also allows us to budget.
Yeah, so depending on the exact line there, there's two cameras going behind the dais in each corner, and then there's two cameras going basically above the door. The two cameras are required above the door in order to shoot you guys appropriately, meaning there's one camera that shoots the wide angle of the dais and the other one is zoomed in on one of you guys. As the microphone switched, that other second camera on the back wall there by the door then would zoom in on the other part of the conversation, we'll say. So now it's able to switch back and forth intelligently. The two cameras that are behind you basically shoot and give us good coverage across the dais to either table that sits in front of us, and then obviously to the podium. Could we do without one of the cameras behind you guys? Yes, we could. But we do need, we do need at least one behind us, one behind you guys, and then two above the door. So I don't think that we'd quite save half of one of those lines, depending on which one you're talking about.
Is that your question, Michael?
Sorry, it was on mute. Yeah, and again, I'm not trying to pick on the cameras. I'm just trying to find something on the list where there are multiples and perhaps it's an equivalent value of what would be required or necessary in order to get the closed captioning underneath, again, the budget cap. That's all. I'll link it up to the experts to figure out how to make it fit.
All right.
Just a question, Nancy?
Sure.
Would there be a potential for any kind of grant funding specifically for the closed captioning aspect? Maybe that, is that, I don't know if that's something that we could make sure that way we get. I'm just thinking of ways that we can perhaps get the system that is going to last us and not be, not miss out on the things that we could have now if we can explore funding options. That's all.
If I could, that is something I know that we had on the list to look at with about four other funding, grant funding projects as well. There's also, thanks to the House vote stimulus money that will be coming at some point, don't know when, but there's also that coming down the pipe too. But so grant funding is, yes, something that potentially could be looked at. Question would be whether timing would work conjunction with this, and then also the potential for additional stimulus dollars.
Karen, do you have a question?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment that if we're going to do this, we should do it the whole way, because this is going to help our constituents and our people that can't come to City Hall, and hopefully they'll be able to come to City Hall in the future. But if they're not able to come, that they would be still able to see what's happening. And if you put in lower-cost things, it's not going to be as good. And I mean, I noticed tonight, it seems like everything's going along pretty well here. But I just think that it's not, it's not as though it's $100,000 more to do this. And we do have the COVID, or, you know, the stimulus stuff that is, we're able to have. So I think we should just try to make it as possible for everybody to have the knowing what's going on at City Hall. And I don't think it's all that much money to make sure it happens. And I agree, people that can't hear need to have the caption. Thank you.
Okay. So this, you want a way of second reading. So this, we should probably have this on regular agenda, or can this go on a concession?
Probably regular, and between now and Thursday. Kevin, you'll determine with Joanne funding for the closed captioning within CARES funds.
Yeah, the vendor's already working on the exact quote, so I'll have an updated quote for you folks. And then I'll work with Joanne to make sure that where that additional monies would come from, from the CARES side, and we'll let you guys know.
And will that be emergency waiver as well, so that we can expedite this to get the equipment in for chambers?
Yes. I mean, I'm okay with that. Did anyone else have a problem with that?
No, no issue.
Okay, so this will be on for first reading, way of second, and declare emergency on the regular agenda. Okay. Next items from the, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, guys.
Next items with Director Parks and Rec.
I'm gonna kick us off, as you might be used to at this point by now. So, thank you. Just to kind of start us off and introduce this for our Director of Parks and Recreation, this is an interesting week for all of us. It was one year ago this week that our lives changed as we know it, as we knew it. COVID became part of our daily vocabulary. It was March 12th of last year when Governor Dewine held his press conference and started to shut everything down. So we've come a long way in many, many ways. In some ways, it feels like we haven't moved at all in the past year, but I know that we've all come a very long way. A year ago, we knew very little about COVID. We didn't know what it was. We didn't know what, how it was going to impact us, what the future held for us. Weeks turned into months, and we were really headed into a black tunnel for most of 2020. We really did not know what was around the corner or what lied ahead. And difficult decisions had to be made as we were going through the year. As we started to approach our summer months last year, we had to evaluate what we were going to do with recreational programming, including our pool operations. And like many of our peer communities in the central Ohio area, and in fact, around the state, we made the very difficult decision that we would not, we were not going to be able to open our pools last year due to the protocols that were being implemented, the very short lead time that we had to adjust to those protocols, the staffing requirements that they would have required, et cetera. Now, here we are. It's one year later, and while there is still much that we do not know about COVID, there's much more that we do know. And the protocols have been in place for a year now. Vaccinations are rolling out, and we've had the benefit of time. Time to evaluate, time to gather additional information, time to talk to peer communities as we've planned. When we did the original budget for this year, it was assuming a full summer of full-out 100% pool operations. But we know we can't do that. However, we have, we, being our recreational team in our Parks and Recs department, have spent many months gathering information, evaluating information, projecting finances, running through multiple scenarios of what our pool operations could look like, given the limitations in operations that we know are still going to be in place. We do not expect those to be changing anytime soon. So while we are not out of the woods, we are, we have been planning and moving forward in a precautionary measure, both operationally and fiscally. And we do believe that we can move forward safely this summer with recreational aquatic programming. I've asked this to be on the agenda for tonight, in the spirit of transparency with all of you, and in the spirit of collaboration, I want to make sure that we are all on the same page going forward before any official announcement is made. And I wanted to give you an opportunity to ask questions, raise any concerns that you might have about how we arrived at the plan that Director Farrell is about to lay out for you. So again, wanted to provide an opportunity for you to really hear what has been going on for the last several months in terms of the evaluation. I've asked Director Farrell to put together a presentation for you that outlines all of the information that they have gathered, the scenarios that they went through, what the projected revenues, expenses of those various scenarios look like, and how we arrived at our proposed plan for aquatic operations this summer. So with that, I will turn it over to Director Farrell.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think, Angela, I think your hand may be raised from a previous comment. I just want to make sure before we get started here.
Yeah, earlier topic.
Thank you. I am gonna share my screen, so bear with me while I take that on. So as Mayor presented, we, really from this time last year, our team has been taking a look at how the COVID circumstance and the challenges along with that would impact the operations of the pool. Specifically to this year, we did a survey to all of the participants who purchased a membership in 2019. Out of those, and really that was just to understand and gauge some interest on what this season, the 2021 season, could look like. So with those results of the survey, 95% of those individuals stated that they plan to use the Gehanna Swim Pools at some capacity. That's whether they're buying a membership or attending, using a day pass. 80% of those respondents plan to purchase a membership, and that's with an understanding that there will be some operational changes, including some of the time constraints, and we'll get to those later in the presentation. But it was understood in the survey that it wouldn't be just, you know, a typical summer. There would be some restrictions in place. So we did receive 80% of those individuals who do plan to still purchase a membership if given the opportunity. Something else that has been extremely helpful in the discussions and really just the evaluation of how we navigate this is roundtable discussions with our peers. So municipalities within central Ohio and really throughout the entire state of Ohio, and just, you know, every municipality is very different. However, we have very, there's some similarities with the pool operation as well as understanding and trying to navigate the COVID restrictions. We were also able to communicate with those municipalities who were able to operate in the 2020 season. That way, understand what worked for them, what didn't work for them as we move into the 2021 year. So within this, again, having the pool open will require some changes to the operation. One thing that has been understood is having swim sessions for each pool. So at Gehanna Swimming Pool and Hunters Ridge, Monday through Friday, have two separate swim sessions available. That way, you're able to rotate more individuals through. That also gives us the ability to clean in between those sessions. Weekends, of course, there are three sessions available. That's, of course, our prime time. So we saw the benefit of including additional time during the weekend to allow more space and more ability for participants to come and enjoy the pool. Along with that, you'll see the 130 spaces per session for the Gehanna Swimming Pool and 65 for Hunters Ridge. What that is, is the Restart Ohio Guidelines do outline the ability to have some type of capacity with your pool. Where that capacity came from was a Ohio Aquatics Roundtable came up with the equation, and it's really based off of the surface area of the pool, not the deck space. So as you can see with Hunters Ridge, there's less space around the water than, of course, Gehanna Swimming Pool. It really comes down to how many people can we safely get in the water to be able to operate. So that's where you'll see where those numbers came from. Something else to note on this slide specifically, so in previous years, the day pass rate is nine, was $9, and that was across the board. We saw a benefit to make a reduction for residents specifically so that they have the ability to access the pools. There's limited time blocks, but we want to make sure we have the pools available for our residents. Wanted to break down that capacity a little bit more. I know it's, there's, it's hard to really grasp. Hopefully, this slide, once I describe it, will give you some information about how we came to this. So from 2019, we pulled some data from previous, from those visits. So for Hunters Ridge Pool, we saw 108 average membership visits for a day, and for Gehanna Swimming Pool is 112 per day. So for members, we saw 108 members on average at Hunters Ridge Pool, 112 on average for Gehanna Swimming Pool. For those daily visits, those are those individuals who don't have a membership, but they're paying that daily rate. On average, we saw 27 day passes at Hunters Ridge and 87 at Gehanna Swimming Pool. So the next chart will outline what those capacities are. So as mentioned, there are 65 spaces available for Hunters Ridge and 130 at Gehanna Swimming Pool. That's per session. So since there are two sessions available Monday through Friday, that increases the overall capacity for the day to 130 and 260. That's during the week. Of course, on the weekend, we have an added session, so that increases that capacity more so. So we would have the ability, based on an average from, again, 2019, we would have the ability to still see the close, a close number of participants that we see even with those capacities in place. So moving on, this is a, an outline of admission for daily visits. So again, that's, you don't have a membership. You're coming in to purchase a pass for the day. So this is just data from 2017 to the 2021 projected, and then there's an adjustment. So we understand that for a normal season for 2021, we would expect to see a decline in day passes, one at HRP specifically because of the capacity limitations. At Gehanna Swimming Pool, we'd still expect to see some, a reduction of those day passes, but maybe not quite as much. So again, this just gives a broad outline of where we had, where we found the totals in order to have a projection for the adjusted season. So for membership revenue, the rates that you see here on the left of the slide are previous, the rates for 2019 season. We don't expect to have any increases to those membership rates. And we, the total's broken down in the chart, is to show how many total memberships were purchased from 2017 through 2019. The projected amount was, at the beginning of the year, again, if we, when we, like Mayor mentioned, we projected our budget and for expense and revenue on zero restrictions. So we understand at this point, there's going to be some limitations and restrictions in place. So that's where the adjustment comes in. So we would see a reduction of memberships based off of the restrictions that we would potentially have in place. So this is another, it's a larger view of the revenue. So each bucket of where revenue could potentially come from, this gives you an outline from 2021 what was approved, and again, what the adjustment is. So here, again, from the previous slides, this just kind of gives you a broader overview. So again, memberships, daily, daily, daily gate, we would see that reduction in concessions, we would see a reduction. We don't expect to have any rentals during the COVID protocols. And then we would also see a reduction in the dive and swim teams. At this current time, we wouldn't be able to have any swim meets at the pool. So that's where you would see that reduction in these, in the dive and swim team. So for the expenses, we have, again, broke down from actual expenses from 2018 and 2019, and then what was approved for 2021, and then again, the adjustments. And for this specifically, you'll see there is a reduction in you'll see there is a reduction in, in staffing. The reason for that would be is with those capacity limitations, we would have less zones for guards, I'm sorry, the zones would remain the same. However, we would have less guards on deck based on those capacity limitations. We of course will and have planned for individuals to monitor social, social distancing as well as increased cleanliness. So that has been accounted for. As far as contract services, you'll see a reduction there. We had an expectation to repaint the, the, the lane lines of the back pool of Gehanna Swimming Pool. Again, that's the, the benefit of that would be for swim meets with the, again, to date, we, we don't expect to have swim meets there. So that, that purchase can be and comes in. So we did have multiple scenarios of what this could, or what could happen in, in a summer season. So the, the first slide you'll see is both pools open and, and the, the data that's there is, is from previous slides, again, all encompassed into this slide. The next would be only opening the Gehanna Swimming Pool, only opening Hunter's Ridge Pool, and then the, that last scenario would be opening Gehanna Swimming Pool for open swim and then keeping Hunter's Ridge for programming only. So it's a smaller pool if we only had, you know, swim, swim practice or learn a swim program, aquatic classes, that type of thing. And clearly, you'll see that, that the biggest impact to this is, is membership. Even with Hunter's Ridge being a, the smaller pool, we see a large, a large amount of individuals who attend Hunter's Ridge with their memberships. It, it is something that is, is used frequently. So without both operations, it does impact that overall revenue. So this is an overview of each year and just the operating recovery. So 2017 through 2019 are actual, well, 2020 is, is also actual. We, as I said, the 2020 will forever have an asterisk by it of, of the, the total income. But the 2021 appropriation and then the adjustment. So all of, again, this is a compilation of the data that you have seen previously to, to show where those reductions are. I will make a note that clearly the, the operating expenses for 2021 appropriation, that again, is if we were open every day, beautiful weather, we have to plan for the best. And I will say that the revenue reflects a, what we would expect to see in an average year. So if we were open every day with, with perfect weather, that revenue would also increase. So our, our service category based off of our pricing policy is for the pool operation is 20 to 50%. So even in that appropriation, we are meeting that, that requirement or, or that responsibility. However, we would expect to perform better than 53%, I will say that, in a, in a normal appropriation. Again, with the adjustment, we are expected to see some reductions in the overall expense and revenue as well. So for the 2021 season, again, we, we would recommend to open both pools. The swim programming would be at the beginning of the day prior to the open swim sessions. Again, that's our learn, learn to swim program along with swim practices and, and water fitness. There would be reservation time blocks for each visit as discussed. The one benefit, or one of the benefits for, for memberships would be that you would have access to, to schedule your block of time 48 hours in advance. Whereas if you don't have a membership, you would have four hours on the day of prior to book your spot. So, so members would have the ability to secure your space 48 hours prior to your, your swim session. So that's definitely a benefit, and we of course would want to make sure that members have access to, to the pool. And again, with COVID, there are still restrictions in place. There have been no updates to the guidelines based off of the Restart Ohio. So the capacity would, would be a requirement. We would have designated seating, seating areas for each household. So when you come into the pool, you'd be given a, a space in order to keep your belongings. Masks would be required in all common spaces. So restrooms, concession stands, you would be required if, as, as you're commuting to each of those spaces to, to wear a mask. Of course, not in the water. We would be enforcing social distancing. The, the amenities such as the inflatable and the climbing wall would remain closed during these restrictions. And then of course, we would always have our staff clean and disinfect all, all, all of the high touch points during each swim session. So that was a lot of information in a, I would hope, short amount of time. Happy to take any questions or feedback.
One minor question. With regard to the advanced scheduling, you, you can schedule up to 48 hours in advance. That's the limit, right? So 72 hours is too far ahead?
That's correct. Based off of what we have currently identified, yes.
Okay. Just a, I, and I think that answered, already answers the question, just looking at, sometimes you have the opportunity for abuse where people will just stack reservation even though they may or may not be able to come and just make sure there's fairness for everyone.
So we would have the ability, so you would be cut off. So 48 hours would be your limit. So you wouldn't go past that 48 hours. And of course, the concept there is, you know, if, we would hope that if you're not coming, that you would, you know, reduce that block. However, we, we can't, we can't ensure that that would happen every time.
And if there's anything unused, like during a session, that's available, that continues to be available, is that right? Okay.
That's correct. Ms. Angela.
Karen, do you have a question?
Well, first of all, that was very well done, and thank you for making it, yeah, I mean, there was a lot of information, but it was very clear. I wondered if Lifetime is still part of, don't they usually have a, a way with us that they, people can come? Is that still in fact?
It is. It is not. So 2018 was the last year of that contract. So that is no longer part.
Thank you.
Steven?
Yeah, thank you. Director, I, that was really, I, I concur with everybody else. That was a really good presentation, and thank you. A lot of information. Two questions. One is very simple, getting a copy of the slides, you know, after the meeting, or I guess they'll be posted. The other thing is, is your view, the trend with COVID, it makes it look like that probably a lot of the health codes will be lifted shortly. You know, we have that variant that may pop up. But given that, is your view in the spring and the summer a little bit different then? Do you foresee that if everything gets lifted, the, maybe some of those not so happy projections would actually be a lot better in the spring and the summer? Can you comment on that?
Absolutely. So, and from a staffing standpoint, we are hiring as, if we're having a full season. So of course, they, we wouldn't schedule you if, if you were unneeded. However, we will have staff in place and the response that restrictions are lifted and we're able to, to perform a, a more typical season. And then of course, we would make adjustments as well to those guidelines that we would have to have in place. We'd make updates so that it would be less restrictive. So we would be in place to adhere to those restrictions being lifted.
Wonderful. All right. Thank you very much.
I have a couple of questions. Would, would you still have a swim team?
Yes. So the swim team would still be in existence, and they would still have practice. The, the swim meets is where we would be restricted to date. Again, there's some hope that, that may be lifted and we'll be able to, to entertain those, but at this point, we would not be able to.
So if, if we can't have a swim meet and other pools likewise, then what is the purpose of having?
It's still the skill and the competitiveness within, because that was something that was able to be done, especially in indoor pools. So you're still able to learn the technique of swimming. So you still, if there's still the benefit of hosting it, it's just, again, having the restrictions of, of the swim meets. And again, we do expect to have some of those lifted or reduced. So in, in that case, we would be able to, to switch gears.
Okay. That's, and I know, you're right. They have had intra-squad meets with, you know, different, during the, this winter, I've, I've attended some of those. In the cert, when you talked about the surface area of the pool, did those formulas take in, do they take into account that most of the people at, at any day at the pool are not in the pool at any one time?
So, and there's, there's a few formulas, and we thought it was the most responsible to utilize the, the swim space. Because again, when you're coming to the pool, the intent would be into the pool. We understand that not everybody goes and gets in the water. We understand that. But we did take into consideration, you know, if, if we have, if we can't accommodate those individuals in the pool, then it would be difficult for us to, to be compliant. So that's where the decision to, to use that formula made the most sense. Because again, at Gehanna Swimming Pool, there's so much space there in between the pools. It would be irresponsible to say that we could fit much more people, when in reality, if, while you're in the water, we would not be compliant. So that's the, the overall reasoning for using that, that, that formula.
Okay. The other thing is, how do they schedule? Is it online?
It would be online, yes.
And if, if people don't have the ability to, to schedule, that would be, I mean, do you think that would be a problem?
I mean, we are in the world of virtual. But if, in, in the event that you did have difficulty, we do have the recreation mainline, and we'd be able to accommodate that. However, I, I, I don't expect to see many issues with individuals having the ability to schedule.
Okay. I think that's, that was it. All right. Okay, that's all I, anybody else?
Any answer, real quick?
Yeah, go ahead, Jamie.
Yeah, we've, we've talked about a splash pad project also. How does that impact, construction of that impact pool season?
Absolutely. So we would expect the construction to be happening during the pool season. Based on the location of where the splash pad is, we can section it off so that it can be safely done throughout the, the operating season.
So the surface area of that amenity, would that affect utilization at any point? I mean, once the thing was up and running, could we increase our numbers?
Theory, which, based off of, we're, we're on a tight timeline. We do hope that the splash pads open prior or during the pool season. But we could amend some of those capacity if, if the splash pad is open.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, that was great. Glad to hear they're going to be open. That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Any other, okay, so any other questions about that? Okay, next up.
I have the first action item. We have identified, or overall, there's 17 playgrounds throughout the, the, the community of Gehanna. And we do have a lifecycle plan for those playgrounds. We do have to, I'll, I'll stick to this first action item. Woodside Green Playground is up for replacement. There are some renderings that are attached that you're able to see. It's exciting. We're able to use some equipment that we have had, that were purchased from previous years. They were, they were discounted equipment. So we're able to utilize these, those within this design. And then the swing bay that is in existence will remain. So we are respectfully requesting an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Midstates Recreation for the replacement of the Woodside Green Playground. The contract would not exceed $124,018. We are requesting an emergency for this purchase. Ultimately, that is to get on schedule to get this ordered so that we can get it prior to the summer season, get it and install it prior to the summer season.
Okay. So anybody have questions about that or comments?
Any answers, Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah, not so much a question, but just a comment. Wanted to express to the guests how pleased I am to see this come forward along with the other one on here. But obviously, I think anybody that might be viewing this should take note of the price tag on these things. It's come a long way since, I think, most of us on this, on this call, when we were, you know, playground age, I guess, or when we were the age that we would use this stuff. With the surfaces and all the safety that's involved, obviously, they come with a six-figure price tag. And sure, many of us on this call remember just a few years ago when the outlook wasn't so bright. I think we were, we were scheduled to be replacing our, our playground equipment at somewhere around a 50-year clip. As Stephanie can tell you, the lifecycle was 15 to 20. So it's, it's just, it's nice that we're being able to, we're in a position where we can finally catch up. So thank you to everybody with that.
Okay, so.
And that's real quick. I, I understand construction schedules and lead time on equipment and everything else. Reason for the emergency, probably a combination of all of that, plus you kind of get, hard to know with a budget, without an approved budget, what, what you could spend. So again, I hate, I hate to see an emergency waiver, but I, again, it looks like lack of planning, but I get lead times and those kind of things and want to get this stuff in. But if we could confirm that, I guess.
That is correct. We did, of course, again, needed to have a, a budget approval, as you had mentioned. We also did our due diligence to, to review multiple vendors. So we wanted to make sure that we were getting the, the right equipment, the, in the right space. So that does take time. So with all of that, we wanted to, to, again, to, to get it done in an appropriate time with the appropriate research. That's why we're here today.
Yeah, and, and I'll, I'll tell you, in my experience, Play World is one of the guys that, you know, lots of folks use. So it's a pretty reputable firm. I know it's a, a new firm with an old name, but anyway.
Do, do you need waiver of second, or it doesn't say that on here?
Or just emergency, I guess.
Okay. Yeah. All right. So just emergency. Do you guys want this to come back or just put it on? This would be entered on for first reading, then no need to come back to committee and then second?
Yeah.
Emergency? Okay.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good with that.
Second.
Can this be on concern?
With emergency, I'd rather be on regular.
Okay, all right. So this will be on the regular agenda. Okay, thank you. Next one is, looks like Headley Park.
Yes. Section, second action item would be same thing. We have the need to, to replace the equipment at Headley Park. And again, the, the rendering is attached. The one is, also, we are using some equipment that we did have in inventory as well. We also are adding some additional swing bays to that space. We, we needed some, some additional there. And then one thing that we definitely needed at, at Headley, if you've ever been, there's, there's no shade at all around that space. So there is an added component of, of a shade structure with some seating. That way, you know, those individuals at soccer practice or games, they can come and use that space, enjoy with their, with their children. So just, it adds an overall amenity for, for that, for the use of that space, not just the, the playground in, in itself. So with that, we are respectfully requesting an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Midstates Recreation for the replacement of Headley Park Playground. The contract would not exceed $231,294. We are also requesting an emergency for this purchase. We would like to have this project done prior to the summer season.
You guys up there?
Yeah, just a logistics question. Are these going to re, sit on top of the existing, or they've moved slightly? So the existing will be usable until they're done?
So it would, they would be, the old features would be replaced, and then the new will go in. So yes, we, we will take in consideration the, the timeframe of when that's happening.
Sure, understand. There's only so much we can do, but.
Mr. Leesberg, you have a question?
Yeah, this, this should, this, this should continue Stephen's heart. I'm glad to see that New Albany is going to be paying for this on the renderings. It says this is in New Albany, Ohio.
It is.
We, we always love, we always love talking fun at folks, when a rendering comes in with the wrong city on or something like that. We get, saying that our, our mayor lives in New Albany.
That's what I hear. That's what I hear. People don't know Gehanna doesn't have its own zip code.
I was checking, I was checking those. I was checking, I was checking those renderings out. I said, it's awful nice in New Albany to pay for those. But, uh, anyway, no, it's a, it's a, it looks like a gr- great project. And, and, uh, again, with the, the shade structure, I know that it is desperately needed out there. So...
Um, is there any thought to planting, planting some trees around in that area? I'm to, I mean, I know the shade structure is going to be great, but it'll wear out and, you know, with the sun. Is there any thought to planting some trees there now so that maybe sometime we don't have to have the shade structure?
They've, they've got some little, they've got some little ones, but, uh...
Are they close enough to? Are they close enough to the playground to be any benefit, though?
Well, with the, the new design of the playground, it, the playground itself actually creates some shade because there is some height to it, um, and that was obviously done purposely. Um, but with, with some age and maturity of the trees, it will provide some, some added shade, of course.
Okay. All right. I mean, you wouldn't want them in the middle of soccer field, but on the edge of a playground there, okay. Okay, all right, same thing for this one, guys?
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
And I, I think it's, is it Woodside Green Park that has the natural play area?
Yes.
It says.
Is this replacing that play area or the regular play area?
The regular play area.
And the natural play area, the last time I was out there, it needed some help. Is that, where is that on a, on a more than just update mulch kind of a plan?
It is, uh, it's, it's getting some love. Um, there's going to be some grass, um, that it will be planted on the, um, if you, if, again, if you're familiar with it, there's a tunnel with some dirt. Um, the, the, the dirt tunnel will, will get some grass and there'll just be some updates to the overall amenities there. Um, that is something that will be done, um, for the summer season. So there is an understanding that it needs some, needs some attention to just keep it updated.
Sure, and then, where is it on? It, it probably needs more work than our regular stuff just because of the type of build it is. Is there some kind of a plan for a significant update to it?
Not a significant update. It's really just overall maintenance to, to continue the, the intent of that space.
I understand. Yeah, I understand not this year. I'm just saying, is that kind of looked at, is that a 22, 23, 24, 25? Where is that kind of roughly in the perspective of when it's a?
Sorry, now, it just fits into like, again, operational as a component. There's not a large dollar amount identified to make an update to that space specifically. Um, so I, we are, of course, are always evaluating what makes sense, um, in the nature play area. So, uh, but there is no large dollar amount that has been identified to date.
Stephanie, can you refresh recollection? When was that put in?
It's not very old.
I must say, three years for it.
It was in 2018.
Yeah, three years.
Years old.
Okay, um, any other questions?
Well, I'd like to state that I think it was Girl Scouts that made that the way they wanted to make, you know, put it all together, which was just spectacular. When I went to see it, I was just, it was just delightful. So maybe there's other new things that they want to potentially bring up, so...
And that's, it's a legacy project for, for the Girl Scouts. So I, I don't disagree to include them. Any type of upgrades or anything of that sort is, is absolutely makes sense.
Pretty cool. Okay, all right.
There are some other metro parks around that have some natural stuff and it's, it's just kind of fun to climb on a tree rather than a piece of plastic, so... Yep.
Um, all right, so we'll do the same thing with this one. Unless there's no objections, we'll have first reading, no need to come back, and then regular agenda in the following meeting. Anything else?
Uh, I would just, just council members, I've emailed to you Stephanie's presentation with regard to pools and I also sent that to our clerk of council so she can attach that to the agenda as well. So you should have that in your inboxes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, we have, uh, other discussions, resolutions, U006, 2021. Okay. Resolution of the City Council, uh, of the Council of the City of Gehanna condemning intimidation and violence, reaffirming equality under the law, committing, admitting to reviving civility. Okay, and so this was just on for a discussion, a general discussion. So, um, uh, anybody want to make comments or?
Sure, um, so I, I guess, uh, just wanted to open, uh, the, the discussion by, uh, sharing my appreciation for the conversation that, that came up, uh, on Monday night. And I also, um, you know, appreciate that, uh, a couple of our council members maybe didn't have the time to review and wanted additional time to sort of look through this. Um, so I, I was hoping that we could talk a little bit further, um, to identify some of the questions and concerns that, uh, were raised last Monday. Um, I also, um, want to back up a little bit and, uh, I, I was, um, commented during our last council meeting that I would like to see this come back to, uh, the, uh, council meeting agenda, yeah, uh, at the next, at the next meeting. Um, although I know that, uh, there have been some significant family, um, needs that ha- uh, other council members have been meeting, so I certainly don't want to rush, uh, this. I don't think it needs to be rushed or pressured in that way, especially when we've got family obligations. Uh, the other piece of that, and I, uh, wanted to share with you that I have, uh, I'm, um, in contact with, uh, the, uh, former consultant for the state of Ohio who worked on this project, who referred me to some contacts at, uh, the University of Arizona National Institute for Civil Discourse. And I am waiting to hear back from, uh, from her specifically on, uh, some of the points that were raised, uh, by, by my colleagues at, at the last week's meeting. Um, I, um, did want to take into account, uh, specifically one of the comments that Ms. Angelo made around, um, what does accountability mean? Um, I think that that's, that's an absolutely fair question and, and one that we, we should talk about. Uh, in my, you know, I think we're, we're all parents here and, um, one of the things that kind of struck me is that accountability is really what we, what, what the expectations that we hold for each other and for our community. And, and we know what accountability means. I mean, if we have household rules or values and our kids don't uphold those household rules or values, we tell them that they missed, that they missed that rule or value. Um, so I think that there, I think that accountability can, can, can look in, uh, like very different things. Uh, I think that, that there are ways to pave, pave a path forward by showing our community that, um, that we can still be in community with each other and still value and respect each other while still also, um, setting these expectations for ourselves and each other. Um, so I, I think with that, I've, I've already shared, uh, based on, uh, our last meeting, why I think this is important for the community. And I'm more than happy to, um, you know, again, open this for further discussion and understand what some of the other concerns or questions might be regarding this resolution.
And other questions, comments?
Yeah, again, I think I was one of the ones that, uh, asked to have this brought back. Um, so to the, to the, you know, requirements and responsibilities, you know, holding people accountable, I think, is, is one of the things that are in, in, in the ordinance, in the resolution. I mean, um, you know, I'll, I'll defer to the, the attorneys in the room, but Ray, you know, Ray, do we have any? Again, if, if we make a formal resolution and say we're going to hold people accountable, what, does that require any further action on our part or those kind of things? Or is this just a, you know, again, you know, I, I, to Marissa's point, I have, I have ways that I, I prefer my children act, you know, and how I handle that versus other folks and, and whether our rules apply to everybody just because we make a resolution, I guess, is the, one of the questions, especially when we spell that out in, in the resolution. Um, are we opening ourselves up to anything like that?
Well, if you say you're going to hold people accountable, I would really like to see a definition of what holding them accountable means. I, I mean, that's, that really opens us up because then it says, well, if you do X to one person, but Y to another, why do you, why is it different? You know, I mean, you really need to define that, what is holding them accountable. And, and so I would really, really, really like to see what that means.
Yes, a- again, that, that was some of the language I had some concern with in, in my first reading of it. Again, because it kind of states that, you know, we will hold people accountable. Well, what, what does that mean? So, um, that was one of the things. The, the other is, again, I'm not, again, I'm not opposed to, um, you know, this, this resolution or something like it. Um, you know, we, we mentioned in our own vision, is state, you know, our own vision statement, um, you know, we're an innovative community, rich heritage, and, you know, we, we promote respect among our citizens. Um, so we already say that in our, in our own vision, our mission, um, you know, speaks to our, uh, diverse and growing community, um, of citizens. So, I mean, we've already kind of talked to a couple of those things. We, we don't put our own speed limit signs out on 270. I'm just wondering if we've already kind of addressed some of this stuff in some of our other documents. And again, like I said, I'm not opposed to it, but, um, you know, we, we've, maybe, maybe we add the, our vision and mission to some of the wheréses that go along with, uh, you know, our constitution and those kind of things that we, that this virus has included in this resolution just to show that we, we really, we really do, uh, practice what we preach. This is already in, in place in the city of Gehanna. Would be maybe a suggestion.
I was, um, I, I tend to agree with that, Jamie. I've, I think that some of this, I don't like the part about hold accountable. I think that should probably be omitted from the, the, um, section. But I, I, I was working on today, like, I, I think, this is my opinion. I, I agree with the, the idea of it, but I, I feel it has a very negative tone to it. The whole resolution, I mean, it says condemning, um, you know, a lot of the things you brought up, uh, happened that you gave as examples, didn't happen in Gehanna. They're not related to Gehanna. And, um, they're, they happened other places. And I think that, you know, we have our vision statement, we have our mission statement. Um, and I think that maybe if we just had a resolution reaffirming those, um, and, and that would be much simpler than, um, this, this has kind of a scolding tone and I don't think, you know, we have a great diversity in Gehanna and I don't, you know, I, it's, it almost seems we're making a problem where there's not a problem or addressing a problem where there's not a problem and, or telling people there's a problem when I don't think there is a problem. Um, I mean, we should all be, try to be kind and accepting of other people. Um, but I think that that, our mission statement, our vision say, statements say that. Um, so I agree with, uh, the idea. I just, I think that this, parts of this are very negative to me, in my opinion.
I have my hand up.
Oh, I didn't see.
No, no, I, can I, I, I'd like to go over. I, I'm glad that Marissa brought up the fact that I had said to hold accountable those who fail to meet these standards. So who creates the standards? We don't know who creates the standards, I don't believe. And how are they held, um, how, how do you hold them to, to the standard? And how do, who judges this? Because I, I think that, uh, the judging of this is, you know, I only have one person that, or one, one, one possibility of judging and that's, uh, you know, God in heaven. So, uh, that, that's a little bit thing, it's a thing that is, uh, disconcerting when you read it. Because we listen to with compassion, well, of course we listen with compassion. And revive civility and discourse, well, we're, it sounds like that we don't have civility, any civility. That's a, a problem, I think. Uh, if you go to the, to the, whereas there are reports of mental, physical and verbal assaults on people of all ages at institutions across the country, including, uh, in central Ohio and in Gehanna. So where is the evidence on this? Do we have any kind of statistics on that? Because, um, I haven't seen statistics on that particular thing, that this is, uh, verbal assaults on people. I don't know, and I think the three, Marissa, correct me if I'm wrong, the three that you brought up last Monday, they were not in the city of Gehanna. They were in Columbus. Am I right on that or did I miss one?
That... No, there, there were, there are instances in Geh- in Gehanna specifically.
And what can you tell us who, what those were?
Yeah, I don't have statistics. I can give you anecdotes tonight. I'm more than happy to. Um, I also, um, did have an opportunity to, uh, review, um, some of our, some interactions our, our officers have had, um, with, uh, over the last specifically 12 months. Um, we do have an increase in instances in Gehanna, um, specifically around mental health instance, incidents, um, and mental health calls. Um, approximately 20% or more of all, um, uh, uh, calls, emergency calls, uh, our, our, uh, reports that our police are involved with do involve mental health issues, um, which often intersect with, um, instances of it, it specifically kind of incivility. Um, I, the two instances that I did bring up, um, specifically last time, there was a, there's a business owner, um, on Johnstown Road that received significant, um, business threats last year, um, around, um, her support of, um, the former president and, um, and, and her support, uh, some of her beliefs.
I, yes.
There was als- there was also an incident with, um, one of our neighbors, Micah Nicholson, who, um, was threatened on 270, um, here in Gehanna, um, um, last year as well. Um, there was an incident a couple of weeks ago at the parking lot at the post office, um, where there was, um, an incident that erupted into, um, language. Again, my point is not to make this negative and I, I don't want this conversation to sort of get turned that way, but I do think that we need to, um, reflect on some of the things that, that, you know, the realities of maybe what are happening here. Um, as the region diversifies, as stress, we all know that people are under, um, a lot more stress now than they were a year ago. Um, unemployment is up, um, um, you know, anxiety and depression are up. So we have all of these, these contributing factors that are leading to, um, greater instances of difficulty. Yes, there is kindness. Yes, there are, um, there is great, there's a great wealth of kindness in the area as well. Um, and I, I, I appreciate some of the points that Nancy made, pointed out. Um, I also think that there's a lot of hope and, and, um, frankly patriotism that's expressed here. Um, again, if, if, I'm more than happy to work with, um, you all on discussing this further. I'm more than happy on, um, sharing with you the information that I am able to pull from, uh, NICD. Um, I think that, that these are, these are great discussions to have, but I, I certainly want to, uh, take the time to understand the concerns that you have uh, and then be able to, um, articulate, I think, maybe why these are here.
Well, let me go on a little bit more here, if you don't mind, Marissa. Um, because I, I think we all take an oath of office and that oath of office, uh, says we're going to, uh, be following the, uh, various things of federal government and state government and our, our charter. Um, uh, so I, I, I think that that in and of itself takes many of these things that are in this particular, it's pretty long too. The wheréses are, are pretty long, that, uh, we, we have done with our oath of office as city council members. Okay, so that takes it without. And I've looked into a little bit on the National Institute of Civil Discourse, which was, uh, another place to end the, uh, Revive Civility Ohio. I looked at that as well and I, I saw things that, uh, again, there were no sta- statistics on this, there were no analytics on it. And I think, um, I, and for instance, I haven't seen anything de- dealing with, um, uh, cancel coun- uh, cancel culture. You know, that's, that's a pretty, um, horrific thing that's going on in, uh, in our nation at this point. But, uh, we're concerned more about Gehanna, obviously. Uh, cancel culture is something that I, I think is just really, uh, not very good. Uh, there's one of these things on the National Institute for Civil Discourse that says, respond to incivility when you see it. Well, that's a, how do you do that? How, how would you do that? There's nothing saying, go and hit somebody because they said something bad or what, what is that? It doesn't make, that doesn't make sense. that? It doesn't make, that doesn't make sense. It's almost like we're going to have civility vigilantes that, that, you know, I see somebody that's being uncivil, I'm going to stop them and say, you know, do we then arrest them? What, what happens? Um, I, I, we have to, it says here, they sign a pledge, a newspaper. I, I just, I question that, that it's needed because we are already doing everything we can possibly do following our oaths of office. And, um, and I don't, I don't think that, uh, the, the, the one that's the probably the worst is holding people accountable for what? Is it something that I think is, is uncivil? Or is it somebody? And, and probably, you know what the equality things are as well. So I think it's just something to, to look at and say, gee, are we already, is this already happening? And I, I do think it is happening. Not, not that we need to revive civility. I think there is already civility in our, in our community. And I could see if we're going to say, you know, uh, something, uh, systemic racism in our community. Of course, nobody, nobody would condone that. Nobody. So, um, it's, it's just a very, um, I, I kind of agree with Nancy that it has some, it, some parts are, are, you know, I can see where you would want to do that, except I think, again, if you're talking about the city council, and that's what this is, the city council doing, that indeed, we, as long as we're doing our oath of office, I think that's probably, it, uh, pretty much contains it. Just my thoughts.
I think that, you know, I, um, and I, the instances you brought up, Marissa, are just, I mean, they're not acceptable. But, um, I think there have been, particularly this last year, I mean, Gehanna has always been a very caring community. I mean, Grin's started out with practically, from just a little hut in, in the basement of Mifflin Presbyterian Church in their basement. And now it's grown to a really fine organization to help our community. And, you know, that, that is Gehanna helping Gehanna. And there's so many things, particularly this last year, um, even on Facebook and different places, you hear about, um, people helping people, just like, I forget his name, the guy that sits, um, by, on Hamilton Road by, um, uh, uh, across from, uh, Tim Hortons there. Uh, you know, people contributed so that he could stay the, practically the whole month of February at a hotel. And so, uh, I mean, just, it's a very kind community. There's, um, uh, and I think that we should encourage that. And I think by encouraging people to be kind and just appreciating that they have been, is, is, it's just more positive than condemning people for what they might, they might do or that might happen, you know? Um, it's just, it's just, I think, I just feel it should be more positive, in my mind. Jamie, you have a question, comment?
Yeah. And, and again, speaking to that, so again, holding somebody accountable, I, again, I'm just kind of listening to everybody talking. I'm kind of picturing the, the scene from, uh, Game of Thrones where we walk behind somebody and we, we yell shame and everybody comes out and, you know, those kinds of things. If, if they don't act civil, which is not very civil to do that. So again, the, the accountability or, you know, holding somebody, again, ab, absolutely. Do we, should, should we promote that? Should we encourage it? Should we do those things? Um, again, what, how we, again, um, hold somebody accountable, I guess, is, is the, you know, it's, it's, it's one of those, the, uh, you know, one of the, one of the, uh, you know, the, the, the problem with enforcement, how do you, how do you, how do you keep, you know, teach your kids not to hit somebody by spanking them? It, it's just kind of counterintuitive, you know? So what are, what are we going to do? Shame somebody for shaming somebody? I, I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure out what, what, how we're going to hold them accountable. And that, that was my, my biggest concern. Again, do we open ourselves? And again, I, I would love, you know, love to hear Ray's thoughts. He said, I think, that maybe that part of it is hard to enforce or hard to...
I think you're right on that one, Jamie. I, yeah. You know, I, I happened to see something that was pretty, that I thought pretty interesting, that, um, it was actually, uh, something I'd seen on, on Facebook. And it was, that it says hate, and it has, uh, it has caused a lot of problems in this world, but it has not solved one yet. And it happens to be by an Angelou, Maya. So I, I, um, I always wonder, you know, when we go to, you know, like to the store and we say, I, we go, what's your name? And it says, you know, I say Angelou and like the poet. And so we have, we have really things that, uh, this idea of hate is probably worse than, than potentially. Now, if we had something on that, you know, do not show this kind of thing, because it's not going to help anything to hate people. We want to be with people. And I, I just, I, I just see that we have, already have most of this. And we need to go with our charter. And we're, we're, you know, the, obviously, this is a year that the charter's being reviewed. And perhaps there's something, um, that would be better off if it was in, in the, in a charter thing. Or, you know, when I'm saying, it's just not, it just doesn't sound like Gehanna. Because Gehanna has always been welcoming, Gehanna has always been, uh, loving rather than hating. And, um, and so, uh, I, I, I don't, just don't see that there's a lot of, uh, civility, not having civility in that. And when we, it's almost like we're saying, we need to, we have it, we, nobody's civil here, so we have to, you know, revive the fact of being civil. No, I don't, I think people are civil here. So I, I just don't see the need. But maybe you can talk me into it.
Well, um, any other comments, questions from any, anyone else has not spoken?
Well, I'll say something. I, I, you know, when I first saw this resolution, I really thought this was, I, I thought it was just an easy statement that the city could, or you know, council could actually say, hey, uh, we, we stand by. It's, it's an affirmation to, um, our civility for all the things that were already said. Um, it's somewhat of an easy resolution. Um, I do remember when, uh, Jim Pietro and, um, Judge Brown were actually, when they started this, I thought it had some really nice concepts then. I thought, I think, I still do think it has some nice concepts. Um, I wasn't tripping over some of these things about accountability or not, because I see it, you know, we live in a society, and it's, it's under the guise of the social contract, you know? And we live in a neighborhood, when we live in a city, that, uh, we're going to act a certain way and behave a certain way. And when those of us who do not, sure, we're elected leaders. It's actually our responsibility to call them out and say, you know, there was probably a nicer way to say that, or something. Um, so, and, and that, Ray, that's what accountability is. It's not that we're going to enforce the police, or we're not going to, you know, do anything else. It's just that mere thing of being a leader and affirming to the same beliefs that Karen, that you said that you stand by. So I don't see an issue with this. Um, I do, uh, recognize and appreciate Nancy adding, uh, you know, the additional phrase and one of the whereas's, you know, because it is something that's definitely in our Declaration of Independence, that they are endowed by the Creator. Fine, that's great. Um, but to, to start to pick this apart, um, and not recognize that there are constituents of all of ours that are out there that, and you heard from one, um, or two. And I, and there's more, uh, not just because they don't publicly and say, hey, I've been a victim of hate, or hey, I've been, you know, you want them to publicly say it so that we have some kind of evidence. I don't think that's really realistic. I think this is just a simple statement of affirmation. I, that's, there's nothing more to that. You know, Melissa and I, we're Renaissance fans, and Renaissance in southern Ohio has a big deal. And we one time participated in renewing our vows, just because they have a nice little chapel down there. And we were stunned by the number of people that actually were thinking that of, as negative. And we're like, no, it wasn't negative. It was just an affirmation of something that we wanted to do, to say, hey, look what we're doing. We've been together now almost 30 years. But at the time, it was like 10 years. And so we wanted to just make a statement. And that's, again, how I see this. It's just a statement. If we can, uh, if, if, if we have some sensitivities over some of the language, fine. Oh, you know, change it.
Jamie? Oh, I'm sorry, Brian.
Um, and just very quickly, I was penciling some notes and, and so, uh, some things. So as, this isn't language, not intended to be language, but just more thought, brainstorming. Language being as a community promoting civil discourse, um, recognizing the heightened stresses in the community, promoting civility among these, amongst each other, reaffirming our charter or mission or vision statements, that kind of a conceptual positivity to it. Um, if, Marissa, if you want to, we can maybe spend some time and maybe work through a little bit of that, and, and maybe try to have something for next week. And if not, we can bring it back to committee, whatever the case may be. I'm, I mean, that would seem to make sense.
Yeah, thank you. I think that sounds wonderful. Um, and I think that there's some, some fixes here to address, um, these concerns, and I absolutely appreciate the feedback.
Uh, Jamie, do you have a question, comment?
Yeah. And it was something that Stephen pointed out, uh, that, you know, we had some folks speaking on this, uh, last week. One of, one of the things I heard was kind of, you know, I think there was a request for enumeration of all the different folks that, you know, I guess deserve this. And, and again, I, I think I'm hearing from everybody that this, this is something that everybody here. So a, again, as soon as we start listing certain parties or those kinds of things, and, and Marissa's original resolution didn't do that, which I, which again, I appreciate it. Anytime we start, you know, A but not B, or just A, B, and C, D, E, and F, feel bad, those kinds of things. So, uh, you know, again, I appreciate the thing was, you know, again, the, the resolution was all inclusive. It just said, you know, th, this is unacceptable to anybody. Nobody should be treated that way. And, and, you know, so, you know, we've, we've seen it both sides of the aisle. We've seen it in all walks of life. We've seen it in, you know, again, race, color, no, no, nobody's immune to this type of, um, you know, behavior, unfortunately. And so I, again, I think, I, I would, I would prefer, again, it just apply to everybody, because everybody should be treated, um, the right way. So, um, again, I do appreciate the, the, the resolution, um, you know, that approached it that way, rather than, um, you know, one or, one or two, uh, groups of folks. So, um, anyway.
Thank you. Yeah, this, this is really intended to, um, be a statement that applies to all. And, um, you know, in my mind, and I, and I want to work through this, but I, I think that there's accountability that, that we have with different types of groups that we, um, that, that we are more, um, connected to. So that, you know, when you are, uh, setting a tone for the group that you, um, have a stronger relationship with, you, you know, you call your friends in. Like if your friend messes up, you call them in on it. You say, hey, I don't think that was exactly the right thing to do, or maybe we could have approached this a different way. I, again, I think that's all that it comes down to. And, and I think, uh, Jamie's absolutely right. Just to circle back to, I think, what, what Jamie's point was, is that it does, it does, um, mean that everyone, everyone is, is entitled to respect and, um, to, um, we don't have to agree. We certainly don't have to agree on policy. We don't have to agree on a lot of things, but we can, uh, we can come to the table, um, with, with, uh, treating with each other with integrity. And that's, that is, and that's exactly, I appreciate Mr. Renner's, uh, point back to, um, the, um, renewing vows. I, I really think that's a really great analogy for this, is that really, we're, we're, we're renewing our commitment, um, which is, which is, I think, where reviving comes from. But, but it's a renewal of commitment, of things that we already, we already know we stand for.
Well, and I, I, I think that's, that's wonderful. But quite honestly, I've taken 12 oaths of office. And every, and I've looked at our vision and mission statement, and my, typically the things that I vote on and, and consider are how those things work. So, uh, and I think we're kind of on the same page here, because we all, we want the same thing that, but this, this seems like it's, um, it, it, I, I, I always want to bring up the fact that one comma, it costs a whole lot. One comma being in the wrong place. You know what I'm saying here? So I, I think that it's important that, uh, we do it so that people don't think that everybody in our community is in need of becoming civil, when right now, we're having a very civil conversation. And, and again, this is for city council to sign, for city council. This is meant for city council. And I think we've, that, that, again, our oath of office is one that is, uh, pretty sacred.
Okay. So do we want to, um, discuss this more in two weeks? Or what do you suggest?
I think since, uh, Mr. Larrick and I are going to, um, maybe rework a couple, uh, some of the language in it, it, I, I'm receptive to this being back on, um, it's up to, I'll defer to council president.
Um, I, we'll see how schedule goes. Um, but hopefully, an evening this week, we can maybe sit down and, and get through some things and maybe put something out.
Okay.
Okay. All right. And if you need to help with that, I'd be glad to help too. So, all right. Um,
I would be happy to.
Careful getting quorum, guys. We're all so helpful.
All, all God's children are, are ready to help here.
Okay. Anything else? And that was our last discussion item.
Yeah. Uh, and folks, uh, again, from, uh, all the folks that have reached out from council and, and, uh, the, the folks at City Hall, appreciate, uh, we got, we got, we got a lovely, uh, a lovely tree, uh, that we, we brought back, um, planting arrangement for, uh, Angie's mom. For those of you don't, maybe that don't know, we lost Angie's mom last week. So, um, appreciate that. Um, and all the, uh, the well wishes and everything else, appreciate it. So, um, I have, I have doubled Angie's life insurance because I was about two weeks without her, and, um, apparently I can't do that. Um, so, me as a, me as a single dad does not work. Um, so the children were barely alive. Glad to have her back. And, uh, but anyway, appreciate it all. Thank you very much.
I hear Jamie dialing back some of his familiar discourse.
Please don't ever leave me. And if you do, take the kids.
All right.
Thank you, thank you very much.
With that, we will close the meeting. Thank you all very much.
Are we, uh, going to?
We have anything else?
Yeah, we have finance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have?
Sorry, Michael. I knew that. I have the schedule brought, brought up here.
Yeah, April, this is Mike. If you'll just let us all know when you're ready to go.
Um, I, I don't have any control on that anymore. So I don't know, just, just, just go, just go.
Okay. All right. I just want, if, want to make sure all the recording stuff's, you know, starting.
Yeah, we're, I'm, yeah, I'm good for what I need.
All right, perfect. So, uh, with that, let's kick off, uh, Finance Committee for, what is today? March 8th, 2021. Uh, we have two items, uh, for discussion, both of them from the Director of Finance. And so with that, Ms. Burry, you have the floor.
Okay. Um, ready to go over, uh, two, uh, policies with some recommended amendments and changes. Um, I do have Jennifer Traubridge from Redtree Investment Group. She is on the line. So we'll talk about the investment policy first. Um, I'll just go over the highlights. And if you have specific questions, she'll be able to, uh, chime in and answer those. Um, so when we looked at the investment policy, uh, the one thing that we were looking to was, how can we increase our flexibility? our flexibility, especially during times of an economic downturn, still stay within O R C and still make sure we're meeting our objectives? Number one, safety, all by liquidity, and then return on investment. So what we did was we, you'll see a lot of strike throughs. That was just a regurgitation of what was in O R C. So what we did was we just adopted O R C, and as it may be amended from time to time, right into the policy. That avoids us from having to go back every time O R C changes and adjust the policy based on those changes. We did leave the, the items that fall with outside of the O R C, which is the corporate bonds, and should there be another investment pool similar to Star Ohio, to give us the, the ability to invest at that if they, they weren't in O R C, but we still wanted to keep those components. So those are still in there. The other thing that we did was we, we looked at some of the investment advisor language and beefed that up a little bit, looked at diversification, and we changed those percentages within the O R C, again, keeping maximum flexibility and safety in mind with the changes. So with that, I'll go ahead and kind of open it up for questions. And then Jennifer would be happy to answer, or I can answer, if you have any.
Thanks, Joanne. So any questions or comments from council on this particular agenda item?
Not on the investment policy, huh? Pretty straightforward.
Joanne, I, I just want to make sure that I'm interpreting it correctly. I got in later yesterday, and so admittedly, I haven't had this in front of me for any more than maybe eighteen hours or so. In essence, does this mirror O R C with the exception of the twenty percent in corporate bonds but sharing two years or less? Is that a fair characterization of this?
Yes, I would agree with that.
Okay. And then I guess just one further question on that topic. Kind of what is the, the motivation? Is it, and believe me, I understand how devoid of yield the market is anymore. Is, is that addition, or that sort of sidecar, for lack of a better word, outside of O R C, is it just to just get us a little bit more yield at the margin?
I'll, I'll let Jennifer answer that one as the investment person.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. Hello, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, you all. Thank you for your time. Yes, Michael, that is the, the primary reason. Well, it's twofold. One, to mimic code, rather than, there were some restrictions that were more restrictive than code, and Ohio revised code, Chapter 135 has had a couple of changes over the last five years. We felt it was time to just make sure we're including all of those. And then in particular, in a really low rate environment, right, we want to widen the guardrails as much as possible, as long as it's still permitted within code. So primarily, the big difference between your previous policy and this version is related to commercial paper. The previous guardrail was at twenty-five percent, and code now allows up to forty. And that is, again, relative to your point, you, you know where rates are, but we'll take every basis point we can get. So it took it from twenty-five to forty percent. It's a nice, a really nice flexible liquid short-term alternative, particularly given that we hope we're not in this low environment for long. So we would rather keep rates, excuse me, we'd rather keep funds shorter term in maturity.
Sure. Thank you for that. And obviously, I know you guys at Red Tree, we're not the only municipality that you deal with. Is this a pretty common, is this proposed investment policy pretty common amongst the rest of your client base?
Yes. And for those very reasons that we, unless someone had a very restrictive reason not to mirror code, our suggested language is sort of code as amended. So that way, you're already taking advantage of changes in the future, should they, should they make more changes? You know, they don't make changes often, but they do, they, there have been a few over the last five years.
Sure, sure. Thank you for that. Anything further from council on this particular item? Seeing none? Okay. What's the will of council? Is, is this suitable for consent?
We put it on regular, just to be on the safe side.
That's fine.
Thank you.
I'm assuming no need to come back, correct? Okay. All right. April, you've got that?
Yep. Yep. Sorry. I keep myself muted and, sorry.
That's fine. That's, so this will go on regular agenda, no need to come back. All right, perfect. Okay. Moving on, second item is also from Director Burry. Apologize, I lost my place on the agenda, but I believe it is the fund balance policy.
Uh, yes. So this was a previously just addressed our emergency reserve. And it kind of had in there a little bit of, of talk about, you know, excess or, you know, our residual balance that, that we might have from year to year that's not reserved or committed or, or otherwise restricted. So what I wanted to do, and, and one of the main purposes for this was to just look at the general fund and, and the fund balance as a whole, and just defining each piece of it. I think it'll make it easier and less confusing when you're going through the policy and how to actually apply it, you know, to our, our budget practices, or to an emergency that might arise. So that's the first thing, is to just kind of move away from just an emergency reserve and look at the general fund and its fund balances as a whole. So with that, broken into two pieces, the emergency reserve itself, and then unreserved fund balance. The other thing that we did was we, we looked at quite a few policies. It's amazing how kind of all over the place they are. We had some that had emergency reserve very low, some that don't, don't establish their percentage as part of their policy, rather they just kind of set it each year based on, on what they're, they're looking at going into the next budget cycle. And then we had some that actually broke the emergency reserve into two. I felt that was a pretty good approach. That's the other part that you're going to see here, is the emergency reserve itself is broken into a disaster recovery component and a counter cyclical component. I think we kind of mentioned an economic downturn in the previous policy, but it was set at a pretty low. It just said that of the emergency reserve, you know, like ten percent can be used. This is saying, we're, we're going to take the full twenty-five percent, and we're going to break it into these, these two components with more of the weight given, obviously, to disaster recovery than counter cyclical. The other thing with the counter cyclical piece is I wanted to make sure that we capture something that might be an economic downturn that maybe not, it may not be felt on a national or state level, but maybe it's just Gehenna. Maybe we have a major, major employer leave, or, or more than one major employer leave. You know, we hope that that never happens, but to plan for it. The other pieces that changed was I did incorporate the pandemic or other public health emergency, you know, before this, you know, who would ever thought that we'd be facing what, what we are facing now. So just kind of giving that pandemic kind of notation and, and conditions for use. The other piece was looking at that unreserved as, you know, that's going to be our first line. You know, it's, it's not restricted, committed, or reserved for any other purpose. Could use it, you know, for regular appropriations as we go from year to year, with the key being that we don't want to drop below two months of operating expenses. And obviously, we could have discussion on that. So with that, you know, if the, the emergency arises, we, we may not necessarily have to dive right into the, the emergency reserve immediately. You know, we'll be able to declare the emergency or declare that the economic downturn, but then we could look at, at what point do we actually need to dip into those reserves? And obviously, that's, that's full council. It needs majority, majority vote to use those emergency reserves. So kind of using that, that unreserved as kind of the, kind of the tick mark, if you will, as, as to when we would approach council and say, we've had this declared emergency, or we have this declared economic issue. It appears that our unreserved is going to drop below that, that two months, you know, that we feel comfortable with, you know, council, at that point, we would, we request that maybe it's time to use those, those reserves. The other big piece was, you know, when we passed this original policy back in 2015, the city did not have, as we all are fully aware, a vehicle for capital improvements. So we wanted to make sure that if we were setting anything aside, that we needed to, to make sure that we could react quickly to the emergency, and more than likely, that would be something capital related. And knowing that all we had was our general fund to use that for, you know, was prudent at that point to say, we're only going to use these for, for capital type items. Well, now that we have the capital improvement fund, and it has a dedicating, dedicated source of funding, you know, we could look to that source and other fund sources first too, and see kind of where we might be, and if we could rearrange things. Obviously, the, the emergency reserve might be needed to subsidize some of that capital, you know, depending on what the initiatives of the city are at the time, and what that capital improvement fund looks like. But knowing that we have some other vehicles to use in, in case of an emergency. And again, you know, the emergency reserve is never meant to meet the full impact of a disaster or full impact of a pandemic. It's just meant to bridge that gap. Because with anything at this level, you're going to more than likely have some sort of federal state funding that's going to come in. So this is just meant to, how can we react immediately and quickly to some sort of emergency pandemic, whatever it might be, economic downturn, until we could, you know, either receive the, the additional funding, or figure out what that plan is, you know, kind of moving forward as we address stuff. So those were the, the kind of big key points in why the, the recommended changes were brought forward, and why we wanted to kind of look at it as more of an overall fund balance policy.
Thank you, Joanne. Jamie, I see your hand is up?
Yeah. I was, I was reminded from Joanne's discussion there, when we first talked about this, the different definitions of what an emergency is to different folks, you know, in parks, a tree falls and wipes out, picnic shelters, or for engineering, you know, a road collapse on Cherry Bottom, or something like that, economic development, flood wipes out Creekside. You know, it was, it was funny what it, what it, you know, an emergency was to different departments and those kinds of things. And to her point, you know, we, we didn't talk about pandemics back then, when we first set this thing up. But, but it was, you know, I, I was very impressed with, you know, again, the thought, the thought that our departments put into what constitutes an emergency for them, and, and how best to, you know, again, if a bridge wipes out, we've got insurance, or the county takes care of the bridge, but we've got to get it back up and running as fast as possible, those kinds of things. So, you know, I, I like this, that we're a little more mobile, I guess, to, to, you know, how, and how we do the, get, get things taken care of if something arises. But anyway, I was just reminded, reminded of that when we had this discussion earlier.
Sure, sure. Brian, I see your hand is up.
Yep, two items. One is with regard to, this is section three, level of funding, second paragraph. So the, the emergency reserve being twenty-five percent, and then as written, it's disaster recovery being fifteen percent, and counter cyclical being ten percent. I, I think what makes sense is that all of the fund is available for a disaster recovery situation, and up to ten percent is available for the counter cyclical. If, if, you know, if we use the twenty-five percent, and there's nothing there for counter cyclical, it is what it is. But that clearly means we had a significant disaster that we had to deal with.
Right. And kind of knowing that typically, when you have, you know, depending on what the emergency might be, you're going to have both those components. So yeah, there, there's a very legitimate reason why you would need to use the full twenty-five percent, because you're probably going to be dealing with both sides of that, the actual onset of the, the emergency and what's needed, and then the following economic impact. But I agree, during a disaster, should the full twenty-five percent be used? And if, you know, if we have to face the counter cyclical, then we have to figure something else out, you know, I, I think that's, that, that would be fine.
Yeah, okay. So make that as, as one adjustment, at least conceptually. And then the other question is more of a bigger picture. Based on recollection, and unless I missed it in the, the list here, basically, this is guidance for the majority vote, whatever that decision is of legislation at that time. There is no additional structure, there is no defined structure around passage of using the emergency fund, or going outside of the guidance of the emergency fund. None of that exists, or that I can think of. Is that right?
Do you mean?
So we have a policy, in simplest terms, we have a policy, a legitimate disaster, a legitimate counter cyclical event has occurred, and it takes fifteen percent to, to make us whole, or whatever the case may be. Again, this is very simple hypothetical. All this is, is guidance. And whatever the vote is of council in that particular time is the vote of council? Is that how this works? Or is this a hard and fast rule that there's a limit? And if that is the case, then assuming there is a super majority type structure that allows the additional funds to be spent, I'm asking minutia, at a time when we don't need to worry about it, but in looking to the future of, in a scenario, just to make sure it is clear to folks who may have to deal with it.
So using more than the emergency reserve itself if needed? Yeah.
More than the reserve, or more than the ten percent that's delineated for counter cyclical, or, or even just using the emergency fund. Using the emergency fund is a simple majority vote of council. Is that right?
Right. And, and there's nothing that would stop council from using more than that towards the emergency. This was just, how much are we going to set aside as the reserve itself? But yes, absolutely. Council could say, we need to use the full twenty-five percent. In addition, we also need to use X, Y, and Z to, to address what we're facing at this point. So this is just what we're going to set aside. Every year, we know it's going to be there. We don't have to go hunting for it. But yes, there's nothing that would stop council from stating, oh, and we're also going to be using these other sources.
Or we'll go against policy.
Yeah, I mean, it's your policy. By, by passing an ordinance, you know, to, to go outside of the policy, you're, you're basically setting an additional policy that allows you to do that. Because everything is through ordinance.
Yep. Okay.
Anything else from council on this particular topic? So a couple of questions from me, Joanne. I, I know that we had a conversation about this prior to a coming forward, about the mechanics and kind of how it came to be. Do you want to maybe use this time as an opportunity to, I guess, just make it clear that this wasn't arbitrary, this, this wasn't necessarily you sitting behind your desk, you know, just randomly picking some numbers and things like that, and putting them on paper? This was, as I understand it, this was guided by a GFOA worksheet? Is that correct? Where, where there were some updated factors since the last time this was put into place, I believe, maybe in 2014?
Right. So, so what we wanted to do is we wanted to go back through that initial, initial workbook to first make sure is, is twenty-five percent still our, our true target? Laying in the pandemic, and laying in the fact that we do now have, you know, a source of capital funding, and looking at the, the natural disasters that have hit the area, you know, recently versus what we may have documented in there. But the, the true need came up was when, you know, the pandemic hit, and we were all not sure how quickly the economy, how much revenue resources would be lost. Like, I didn't feel like the, the initial policy addressed what we were currently going through and what we may need of that emergency reserve. So wanted to first make sure that, you know, we went back through and that twenty-five percent still seemed appropriate. And also going through, and again, looking at some other policies to see, is there, there anything new? Is there anything that somebody's recently adopted that we didn't think of? So it was the onset of the pandemic that kind of stemmed that, hey, we probably need to look at this again. And not only because of the pandemic, but also because, you know, we state within the policy itself that every five years, we're going to review this and make sure that it, it looks acceptable. So yeah, so we did go back through everything. We didn't see a need to increase the target beyond the twenty-five percent. And I think the workbook actually comes out to nine, between nineteen and twenty-five percent. We've picked the, the higher end of that, just to, to be safe.
Okay. And then just one, one more here for me. We want to kind of maybe We want to kind of maybe walk through and practice how this would work with, with some real numbers. So right now, if memory serves me correctly, our anticipated or expected general fund expenditures is somewhere around 25 million or so. Correct me if that's wrong. So 60 days, that is basically, what about 4.16 million, somewhere around there?
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Plus or minus. And, and then the official 25% emergency reserve would be roughly another six and a quarter. So we're talking almost, you know, 10 and a half million set aside for just in case.
Right.
How, what is, I know we passed an ordinance about the, the 60 days. How does, how, what, how does that work? I guess, what are the mechanics behind the 60-day, you know, operating expenses being set aside? Is that just something that is meant to be there during the budget process?
Correct. Most of this stems from the, because that, you know, that's when we're figuring out the next, next year. That's when we're figuring out what our operations are going to be. We're looking at what we have in resources, which would be our planned revenue and what we have in unreserved fund balance. Kind of very similar to that worksheet that I provided during this year's budget process. It said, here's where we are, here's the emergency reserve, here's how many months of unreserved balance we have after council would, would authorize some, some use of it. So except if something happens, obviously mid-year. You know, something happens mid-year, we're going to have to look at, you know, kind of where we are and where we think. And that's when we adjust, you know, midstream, kind of what we did in March of last year. You know, we had to adjust midstream and figure out where we are, where we're going to land. So it's all about, you know, where we're planning to be. And during those budget discussions, that's when we would talk about, you know, where we think our unreserves going to end, what our emergency reserve is going to be. And then if something were to happen, you know, during the year, you know, we would come back to council and say, you know, we've had to adjust. This is now where we think we're going to be. You know, it looks like we're going to fall below that two months of unreserved fund balance. You know, maybe we need to talk about, do we have the conditions set in front of us that we should, you know, use part of that emergency reserve? And that'll also be communicated again as part of the budget process, same as it is now. You know, here's what we're planning on operations, here's 25% that'll be set aside. And, you know, just continuing on with that, that process from year to year.
Thank you. So anything over and above, as we stand right now, about 10 and a half is to kind of use the old phrase that used to get thrown around all the time, is one-time and perhaps strategic in nature? Is that a fair assessment?
Um, I, I think back when we didn't have a capital source of funding, you know, anything that was in, in excess of that unreserved, that it was put aside for, for those purposes. And it, and needed to be at that point in time. But now that we have the capital funding, really, we should be looking at that, that excess as, you know, above the 10 million. As, you do we have initiatives, just regular operational initiatives from year to year that maybe we need to dip into that from time to time? And as long as we're keeping that 10-some million, you know, in our banks for safety, there's no reason why we couldn't. So moving away from that, it can only be used for capital and it can only be used for one-time initiatives to, really, where do we want to be as a city? And if we have these overarching goals in our future and we're keeping an amount set aside, you know, for the, these purposes, use it to get us to that end goal, whether it be operational or one-time or not.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. I see your hand is up. And if you have any goal, ending by nine o'clock, you got six minutes.
Yeah, I think this is, this is pretty short. When we did the original policies, one of the things that we spent just a couple of minutes discussing was renewal of the policy and review of it on a periodic basis. Specifics, I don't recall. It's been a little while, but one, at least one was set at about a five-year review cycle. The, another one I was, I'm certain was set at a seven-year review, review cycle. Essentially, my only, the only ask here is that we establish a means of a formalized review. Could be an update or just validation that it is still current on some schedule. So that it's not when the next crisis occurs that we go back and review. That was the intent of that periodic review. This is pretty close to that cycle. It might be a year past. I'm not sure. And again, I'm not tied to five years or seven years or any other amount, but just something that establishes a cycle, a cyclical at some date in the future will at least pull it up, just to make sure that we haven't let it get stale. And, and the driver of that is, just as a reminder, is that the original policy had been in place for decades.
Yeah. And we have that, that in Section 8. We have the five-year review and reaffirmation.
Perfect.
Every five years.
I missed it.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order?
I would just like to actually thank Joanne for her work on both of these policies and for spending time on the phone tonight because it is her birthday.
I'm sure this is how, exactly how you wanted to spend it.
Who doesn't want to spend their birthday talking about policy?
Perhaps Mr. Councilman Renner may also have a birthday to share tonight too.
Joanne, I was just going to say happy birthday. It's my wife Melissa's birthday as well.
So back to the topic at hand, what is the will of council on this? Is this a situation where, you know, we're, we're good here, no need to come back and we'll put it on for regular agenda?
I think so.
I see some heads nodding on that one. Okay, April, you've got that?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Alright, then we are adjourned at 8:57. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.